All right, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Today is Tuesday, September 28th. It is 5:34 PM. This is the Laredo College Finance Audit Committee meeting. I caused this meeting to order. Continue on with roll call. Judge Merculio Martinez.
Present.
Tita Vela, absent. Esteban Angel, absent. Jorge Delgado, present. Move on with the agenda item number three, which is the preliminary August 2021 financial report. Mr. Cesar Vergara.
Good afternoon, members of board. For the record, Cesar Vergara, Vice President of Finance. Tonight we'll go, we'll be presenting the preliminary August 2021 financial report. This is the first draft of the 2021 financial report year end. We will most likely have the final report during the month of December. We are currently started the audit for fiscal year 2021. Our auditors are already working with us on getting, gathering the information that will be needed for this audit. So we may, I'll go ahead and start with the numbers, budget versus actual. And again, this is as of August 31st. Revenues, as you can see, we did collect 100% revenues. We had budgeted 58.6 million in revenues. Revenues came in at 58.9. Revenues were 58.9 million. We do have a couple of adjustments that need to be made as we close out the fiscal year. Primarily, we're looking at approximately an additional 250,000 to 275,000 in indirect cost revenue from grants. Also, one of the adjustments that we'll be working at the year end is the recognizing lost revenue that will be charged to the CARES Act grants. So again, at this point, 58.9 million is a preliminary revenue. For expenditures, we budgeted again 58.6 million. Expenditures came in at 51,000,26,659. Right now, we are showing a net change to the fund balance of 7.9 million. Again, expenditures, we do have a couple of adjustments that we need to record, year-end entries. So we are expecting that we will probably have an increase to expenditures of another million dollars when we close out the fiscal year. For the ITIA EDC Economic Development Center, again, budgeted, budget was 173,594. Revenues came in at 189,684, 109% of our budgeted revenue. Expenditures came in at 199,595. And this actually is a decrease to the fund balance of 9,011 for the fiscal year. Auxiliary services, budget was 1,563,240. Revenues were 1,319,671. The expenditures came in at 954,599 for an increase of 365,000 to the fund balance. Now, auxiliary services is made up by of student service, student activity services, the bookstore, campus housing, and the last one is the Clinic at the South Campus. The major increase that we saw was the revenue that was generated by the clinic at the South Campus. This was a rental revenue that came in for the fiscal year. For restricted funds, the year-to-date revenues and expenditures were 43,198,123. Now, from the amounts that were received from the emergency relief funding, we received a total of 53 million, 200,000. Out of that, we have already spent 24 million. We do have a balance of 29.2 million from the, our funding. We do have an extension for, for that, for those grants. Originally, those grants were going to conclude January of 2022. We have received a no-cost extension through May of 2022. Again, most of the money that has been expensed out of those grants has been for emergency aid to students. Approximately about 23 million has been awarded to students. This next item is just to see where the differences were for the fiscal year when we looked at our budget versus actual. In the revenue, again, we did see a shortfall in tuition of 1.1 million for the year. An additional 779,000 in general use fees. However, those shortfalls were offset by increases in tax revenue. We had budgeted 36,217,000 for fiscal year 2021. Tax collections came in at 38,274,000 for an increase of 2.3 million dollars. We did have an increase in transfers out from the general operating fund. And these were to the plan fund to cover an interest payment for one of our bonds. The increase was approximately 493,000. So when we look at the revenue, the budget was again, as we mentioned earlier, 58.6 million. Revenues came in at 58.9, and that was a difference of 272,000 additional revenue that came in. The major differences were in our expenditures. For salaries, we budgeted 34.5 million. Actual expenditure for the year came in at 32.1 million for savings of 2.3 million. Corresponding benefits, we did see also a decrease or savings of 1.5 billion. Followed by equipment, savings of 684,000. Supplies, savings of 639,000. Student expenses, savings of 111,000. Professional development, 150,000. And contracted services, we also saw savings of 1.7 million. So the total amount that we saw in savings for this fiscal year was 7.6 million dollars. So again, when we factor in the additional revenue of 272,000 and the savings of 7.6 million, we have a net change of 7.9 million to the fund balance. Again, these is, these numbers are preliminary. We are still pending some adjustments that need to be made as part of the audit process. When we look at the facility's master plan phase three at the year, at year end, we have a balance of 21,968,255. We had construction costs of 2.6, almost 2.6 million dollars. And this were mainly in the projects that were completed this past fiscal year, which were the College of Field Science building at the South Campus, the Seattle Science Complex here at the main campus. Again, the net change, once we factor in the interest revenue generated by the bond proceeds, we had a decrease of 2.4 million this fiscal year. Again, we have an ending balance of 21,968,255. This next slide essentially gives us a breakdown of how those 21.9 million are allocated for the remainder of the phase three. And this is, projects were discussed last month as part of this presentation. And again, we did have the board approve two additional projects, which was a remark, but at Environmental Center, at 1.5 million, and the MFA HVAC repairs and upgrades at 2 million. We do have one line item there that is part of phase three. When we first started phase three, we had located a close, about 4 million dollars for equipment and furniture. That allowance is down to 2.9 million as we have completed some of those projects. The approved contract that we're currently working on is the roof and soffit repairs at the South Campus. That contract was awarded to American Contracting this year for 3.3 million. The balance remaining in the, on that project is 1.4 million. We have already received a request for payment for the first part of the project. The South Campus security cameras, again, that product, project was awarded also this fiscal, this fiscal year at a cost of 595,320. So once we take into account the encumbered projects, the equipment and furniture allowance, and the approved contracts, we have a balance of 1.3 million, 1 million, 379,939 that are currently unallocated. Part of that is the contingency that we have for phase three. As we continue to work with these projects, we do have a contingency line item that would help us address any unforeseen costs. Any questions on so far?
Sure, Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Based on, on your known presentation and what we now have just been exposed to, I would say that we are in exceptional financial condition. We frankly, that, what, what we have in mind now, once these incorporate projects are, are, you know, once you go through with that, we also have quite a bit of additional funds for, hopefully, and eventually, we will go into that indoor firing range. Because in my opinion, that indoor firing range, and, and I would also like to bring it up with you, Mr. Chairman, that if we're fortunate enough to get all the members of the board to agree on, on, on that, the construction, that has a tremendous amount of future for the college in generating quite a bit of revenue. Because it'll be under contract with the federal government. The federal government has committed, based on, on their comments, that they will be, at least make use of that facility for at least 20 years. So that means that for at least 20 years, the Laredo College is going to also be, you know, bringing in a good, a good, you know, source of revenue. Over and above what, what we already have here. I would say that our master plan, as you already have presented, and the overall operations of the college, we are frankly very, very solvent. We're in excellent shape. My compliments to you as well as to the staff and, and the faculty. I, I know, I made this observation to Dr. Piarina, but we are one of very few colleges in the entire state of Texas that has this solvency that is in a very, very good, you know, financial position. In spite of, there's a drop in enrollment, which is understandable because of the, of the coronavirus situation. But in spite of all of that, we're still, we're very fortunate that we are, financially, we are in, in a, quite solvent and in a very strong position. If, if there should ever be a need for us to float a bond issue, I, in my opinion, I don't think we should have any kind of problem getting, getting the three financial rating agencies out of New York to give us a good, a good, you know, rating also. Not that we are planning on it, but do that as a man, I think it's, is something that, that we are in, in, in. Financially, we are in excellent, excellent shape. My compliments to you and your staff. It was a very, very good presentation.
Thank you, Judge. And like I've always said, it's a team effort. Again, as you saw in the presentation, when it comes to revenue, we were spot on with our projections. Again, we were actually anticipating a shortfall on the tax collections. But that, for good fortune, that didn't happen to us. That actually helped us offset the shortfalls in tuition and fee revenues. But again, we had projected that tuition and fees were going to be down this fiscal year. There were a little bit more, it was a little bit more than what we had projected. But like I mentioned, the surplus tuition, sorry, tax revenue that came in helped us offset that. As far as the expenditures, again, this is a team effort. And I think the departments throughout this institution have done a good job in, in keeping their budgets in line. As I was mentioning on the tax collections, and we have.
Mr. Oh, yes. Can you go back to that slide real quick?
Yes, sir.
It shows that there's a balance of basically almost close to 1.4. What are we doing with that 1.4?
Part of it has to do with the contingency. We do have a contingency that is for the complete phase three. As we go through this project, anything unforeseen comes up, we go ahead and tap into that contingency. Also, as we have completed some of those projects, we've had savings from those projects. And so part of that has been, I would say about 400,000 of it has to do with savings from the completed projects.
With the chapter having range, since it's already over the 846.
That would be part of that amount that would come out of that. So we're looking at about another 100, 846, and the amount that was, that we're requesting to get approval is closer to 971,000. So that difference would come out of that.
Thank you.
As we mentioned, tax collections, we did for 2021, we had a tax levy of 36.9 million. Collections came in at 37.3 million, or almost 37.4 million. Right now, we're showing a collection rate of 101%. We did verify our numbers with the appraisal district, and our tax levy calculation matches what they have on record. We do, like I mentioned, at this point, still verifying the numbers that the tax assessor collector has to make sure that this is accurate. Again, we are showing 101% collection rate at this time. But again, this again has helped us offset some of those shortfalls. Again, we have verified the numbers with the appraisal district at this point, and what we show as a tax levy is correct.
Mr. Chairman.
Should we recognize this, Judge?
Thank you, sir. Just as a little background, I had a very, very lengthy conversation with Ms. Varela, Patrisse Varela, who is right now, of course, our tax assessor collector. And one of the things that they have found out is that the previous, the previous tax assessor collector, for whatever reason or other, there had been quite a number of other accounts that had never been collected that had been there, but somehow or other, they were never, I mean, just there without, without any, any, any try to, you know, make an actual, actual contact or actual collection. And according to Ms. Varela, they have found quite a number of these individual accounts that for one reason or another, they, they were just sitting there without any kind of activity or anything. And in a manner of speaking, that they have now been able to make those accounts that were supposedly dead or not, not being addressed. They found out that they, they needed to be collected. They found out that they they needed to be collected, which they did. And from what I understand, they have been able to bring in quite a bit of additional revenue than what had originally been expected. So we have to thank Ms. Barrera in a manner of speaking. That actually it has also benefited us, Laredo, Laredo College. And this is one reason why additional monies have been collected over and above what had been expected. So in fact, this is a big loss for us.
Yes, and and if that is the case, like I said, we we are working on reconciling with them. But if it is that it was all balances that had not been submitted to the institution, then. Obviously, we're going to go through that process of reconciliation because part of the audit is. There is a verification of the amounts received by the institution, and we have already sent that information out to Ms. Barrera. To verify. She is, she's working on her reconciliation. If there were old balances that were submitted. That makes up the difference here that we're showing the the amount that has exceeded. Our projections, then we may have to do an adjustment to reflect it on our bills. Properly, if they were for old balances. Again, this is. Right now, the amounts that were received were not identified as being old balances, so they were recorded as current. Tax collections, but if it so happens to be that there are outstanding balances for other accounts that were. From previous years, then we'll have to reclassify that revenue. But but again, at the end of the day. The surplus that has come in has helped again offset the tuition and fall, tuition and fee shortfalls that we have for this fiscal year.
If I may, Chair recognizes legal counsel?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Judge Martinez, just to add to that. Ms. Barrera came into the office in twenty twenty one, January one, and she had a. A deputy assistant that was working with. We immediately. Met with them and it was a very smooth transition. She. Had, I think, started taking over the operation sometime toward the end of last year. But as usual, as we have done every year. The the accounts that that are current year accounts and become delinquent, and they always become delinquent on February one, that's the date that we come to link. They're turned over to us in a database. And we work that part of the account mix and and we have about. Six full-time staff members that work it daily, five days a week and. Variety of different tools that we've used and fortunately, with the assistance of Ms. Barrera and our staff's hard work, we were able to. Get the collection rate. So that would be the, once the the taxes become delinquent on February one, and then they get turned over to us and we aggressively go up. Try to bring those in. So by the time you get to, I think, August thirty one. You have in the in the account mix, their current year taxes that were collected. Before they became delinquent and that obviously the majority of the taxes are collected by that time. But you have a group of taxpayers that, for whatever reason, they had difficulty. Making the payment in full by January thirty one. We work with those and work hard. So we are pleased as well with Ms. Barrera's help and and again. Me, my staff really worked very hard to to help achieve the the rate that we have this year.
To be honest about it, we're very fortunate that she got reelected. Because the college actually lose money. On bad accounting on the previous administration, let me put it that way. And for what I learned from her. That they they were quite, quite. They ended up actually working late Fridays and Saturdays. Even in one, more than one occasion, they ended up working including Sundays. In order to to correct some of those accounts. That have been neglected or have been ignored or that it, whatever it was. That they ended up bringing it back again into into their active account.
Into the data.
Into the data. That's correct. So we were very fortunate that. That that our community, you know, was able to get Ms. Barrera reelected that actually has helped. Our college, okay, from that point of view, and I'm sure you already. Have had a chance to to discuss that with Ms. Barrera. If you met with her, I'm sure.
She did not bring those accounts to our attention and discuss those in detail, but. But all the data that she provided to us, so we have, we receive thousands of accounts in electronic form. We work every single account in that data. And some of them, you know, you have to be careful how you work, and there are some that are in bankruptcy and can be technically. Challenging to collect and it takes time, may take a few years before you see your revenue. But we work those accounts.
And thank you very much for all your hard work.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, the next item is the monthly investment report, and this is as of July thirty first, twenty twenty one. We should have the August thirty first, which would be the quarter, the fourth quarter and the end of year. Investment report by the next meeting. You can see the deposits. We had at July thirty first were eighty one million seven hundred forty nine thousand four hundred forty five. In addition, we had a. An FIT investment pool of fifteen million fifty four thousand four hundred fifty. And the tasking investment pool, which makes up our endowment fund of three million seven hundred sixteen thousand nine eighty five. For total investments of a hundred million three hundred twenty thousand eight eighty. And lastly, we have just the preliminary preliminary general operating fund balance. And again, to echo your comment, Judge. We did have a good year this year. Actually, we had a better year this year than last fiscal year. Based off on the preliminary numbers from operations, again, we're adding seven point three million to the fund balance.
Excellent.
Again, from operation, it was seven point nine. Like we mentioned, we did have an additional transfer to cover a payment. For interest payment on the bond. So the net change and the net increase to the fund balance, and this is preliminary again, seven point three million. Compared to last year of four point eight million. Now, again, we do. Have some adjustments that need to be made, primarily again, Gatsby sixty eight, Gatsby seventy five. Those are part of our year-end entries. We won't have those numbers ready probably towards the, to the end of October or early November. We do have pending information from both TRS and ERS for so that we can complete those entries on our side. When you look at the fund balance again, before Gatsby sixteen and seventy five requirements. And this was at the end of twenty twenty, at the end of twenty twenty, beginning of twenty twenty one. We had a fund balance of forty four million six hundred sixty eight thousand three hundred thirty nine. And like I mentioned, it's way above the twenty percent. That the board requires us to maintain the fund balance.
Excellent.
At this, at this time, that concludes the presentation. Any questions?
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Very good job, sir.
Move on to agenda item number four, which is the approval of annual subscription for the library. Enterprises.
Yes.
I'll let you pronounce that one.
Actually, I I'm not sure if I've been pronouncing it correctly. I call it Cersei Dynex Enterprise System.
That is correct?
Yes, that is correct. Essentially, this is the information. System that is used by the library. And we're asking that the board approve the annual maintenance renew. For the software in the amount of eighty one thousand seven hundred sixty one thousand forty nine cents. The period covered is September first, twenty twenty one, through August thirty first, twenty twenty two. And again, listed on the agenda are some of the features and some of the uses of this software. And it is used for serial, serials control, acquisition and fund accounting. Material booking, circulation control, and again includes. The blue clue and analytics and annual subscription. And the book mine plus subscription. I'm not too familiar with the software, but we do have our library director here. If you have any questions regarding the features.
What is this referring to? Price and what was it asking?
Last year was seventy eight thousand, sir. Again, there was a slight increase. To to the price, yes.
Judge, any questions? Thank you, Mr. Vela. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number five, approval of acquisition of serials and periodical services from EB SEO Information Services.
Yes, and this item is again related to the library services. It is part of their annual operating budget. Right now, we're asking board approval. For the acquisition of serials and periodicals. In the amount of a hundred sixty three thousand seventy eight dollars. And my understanding, these are online or electronic services. For the library. We do issue out a purchase order for the complete amount, and that is used up by the library as needed during the fiscal year. Again, right now, the amount that is being requested is a hundred sixty three thousand seventy eight dollars. They have budgeted the services as part of their twenty twenty two. Library services budget.
And this is for both libraries, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Judge, any questions? Chair has done. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to agenda item number six. Approval of contract with Texas MultiCam for athletic field maintenance services.
Yes, this is the annual maintenance contract, turf maintenance. Contract for the athletic fields, both here at the Fort McIntosh and South Campus. The fields that are covered under this maintenance program. I do have a correction to make on the agenda. Actually, it is not seven athletic fields, it's six athletic fields. We did eliminate the one that will be used up by the track training pack. So the amount that is being requested for approval is fifty two thousand eight hundred eighty eight dollars. Last year, it was fifty eight thousand. And again, the decrease is attributed to that one sport field that we will not be including in this. This year's maintenance program. Again, we have a one competition, baseball field at the south campus, the competition field here at the soft. The softball field here at the main campus, soccer field at the south campus, and then we do have. Two practice soccer fields here at the Fort McIntosh campus. And again, this is the annual program that we use to maintain the fields. There is a description on the agenda item as well as a copy of the proposals that were received by Texas MultiCam. And this is actually going through a buyboard contract. And the contract number is six one one dash two zero.
That particular contract was it over a number of years?
It's an annual, annual agreement, sir.
The fact that we are no longer involved, at least for this last year and this year. None of our athletic programs are are actually. In in in, you know, being being promoted, so to speak. In spite of that, we would still need to maintain the the fields.
Yes, Judge, we we have made a significant investment on those fields and the recommendation from administration. And from physical plans to maintain. Yeah, to continue to maintain.
Yes, sir. Okay, I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vela. We'll move on to agenda item number seven. Which is the approval for the purchase of computer equipment for the e-learning and instruction innovation center.
Yes, this next item is, we are requesting that the board approve the purchase of computer equipment from Dell Technologies in the amount of. One hundred twenty eight thousand two hundred ninety six thousand thirty four cents. We are looking at purchasing a hundred eighteen computers. With accessories, a hundred and thirty five Dell, twenty four inch monitors and eighteen Dell Slim soundbars. The equipment is to be used by the e-learning and instruction innovation center. The purchase is being made using the American Rescue Plan funding. Provided through the Higher Education Emergency Relief Funds. The contract is a Texas Department of Information Resources contract, and that number is TXDIRTSO thirty seven sixty three. Any questions on this one?
Judge, any questions?
Not this time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vela. Move on to agenda number eight, approval of the five-year agreement with Trane for chill water treatment services at Fort McIntosh Campus.
Yes, we are requesting board approval for a five-year agreement with Trane. At a cost of a hundred fifty thousand eighty four dollars. For monthly chill water treatment services here at the Fort McIntosh Campus Central Cooling Plant. The annual cost for this next fiscal year would be twenty eight thousand nine hundred twenty dollars. And those funds have been budgeted as part of the physical plant's contracted services account. The services that we're looking to acquire. Is a condenser water, monthly inspection. And that includes maintaining inventory for continuous feed of all chemicals. And and testing for components of open recycling system in order to protect the equipment from scale corrosion and biological threat. Threats. And also, the services also include the shield closed loop system. And again, these are monthly inspections, and again, it includes the treatment of water. To protect the equipment against corrosion and biological threats. The contract is under buyboard, and it is buyboard contract number six three one dash two zero. And again, this would be the maintenance for the chill water chemical treatments for the central plant.
For how much is that, sir?
The total five-year cost would be a hundred fifty thousand eighty four dollars. The cost for year one is twenty eight thousand nine hundred twenty. Again, those funds have been budgeted in the twenty twenty two physical plant contracted services budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vela. All right, we'll move on to the last agenda item, which is agenda item number nine. The approval for renewal of unlimited broadband services purchased from T-Mobile Sprint Business, Dr. Fred Solis.
Good evening, board members. This particular agenda item is coming for the board for approval. It has to do with providing the unlimited broadband service that is built into the six hundred laptops that were purchased about a year ago. Using the emergency higher education emergency relief fund monies, or in other words, the HERF monies. So the subscription that was initially purchased has now come to an end, and this is simply to renew that unlimited broadband service again for one more year. For the same laptops. These are the laptops that are issued out to students and or staff whenever they have to do remote services. Or participate in their online classes.
What was the cost of, you know, I'm asking for?
A hundred and eight thousand. Same price, pretty much.
Mr. Chairman, if it's all right with you, I'd like to make a motion that we formally have under consent items at the regular board meeting. Items number four, five, six, seven, eight and nine. At the regular board meeting with the members of the board trustees on Thursday, we. I'd like to make that into into a motion. I know that if it's all right with you, Mr. Chairman.
Let me, Chair recognizes Dr. Marisa.
Yes, Dr. Theatina, interim president for the record. Yes, they're already judge, under the consent items. Yes, all of the items that we talked about today will be under consent.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Marisa. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm open for any questions?
No. Thank you very much, Dr. Burke. All right, then, thank you all very much. That will conclude. If I can have a motion to adjourn.
So.
All right, we are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. The time is six thirteen. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.